Okay, folks, it's seven o'clock. Let's call this meeting in order to stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, amendments to the agenda.
I would like to suggest two tonight if I could. Slate Valley Electric would like to have a credit at the transfer station, so we need board approval for that, and we have two applicants for the trustee of public funds.
Oh, good.
That's good news. Entertained a motion for both of those.
Second?
Motion. Sorry, jumping ahead here. I move that we accept the amendments, the agenda.
Okay, those will both be new business. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and trustee. Okay, approval of minutes of June 13 first.
Make a motion to approve the minutes actually as written with the exception of we've correcting Jason's name on the minutes.
Should I recuse myself in this vote?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Are you just talking about the first page?
First page.
First page.
If you knew the problems, just emailing this thing here that day, that whole week, I'm surprised that that is all there is.
Well, I'll ask that question. Any additions, deletions, corrections anybody has? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then there's the special meeting, which...
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the emergency meeting.
Second?
Any additions, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Five minutes for public comment. Okay, nobody on?
No.
No, sir.
All right. All your jobs say for another?
Another double days.
Department head report.
It's like it's just me today, guys.
It does look that way.
Okay, we'll start with the police. The police report is in your box, but just to hit the highlights, for motor vehicle enforcement, we had 22 municipal violations, 13 written warnings, one parking violation, and two crashes over the last two weeks, no overweight permits, and we had 15 sets of civilian fingerprints since two weeks ago. From, let's see, DPW, the guys have been going around, they've been patching holes. I know there was one big one they warned me about on South Main right at the bridge. I think they got that this morning.
Did they? Okay, because I was going to bring that up later.
That guy's been patched. We have been, so the DPW did install the water line for the sprinkler system at the town hall. We still do need to put a little bit of topsoil and grass on top of that, but there are other things that needed to be done for the public. For example, there's a storm drain that needs to be replaced out on, I think it's on Allen, that's been sitting for maybe four or five months now. So the guys are doing that tomorrow, rain or shine. So they're going to get that done. Water lines in, hole patching. We've had two, we've had two guys out, so we've been a little slower these last few weeks than we normally have been. One was out for medical reasons and the other one was on vacation. So they will be back to full force starting early July. So a bright spot for DPW, I had a gentleman come in today and he said, "Who's that kid at the transfer station?" And I told him, and he said, "He's doing a great job." He says, "He got out of the shack, he came and helped, came and helped the young man unload his garbage." Just, he couldn't say enough nice things, and that's TJ Covino.
TJ what?
Covino.
Covino, oh, I know TJ.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Your public comment's already happened. In that case. That's good. Nice to hear positive.
It is, it is.
That's good he's doing that. That's a big deal. People like that. They see that and they like that.
Yeah, and that's kind of, I think we'll talk a little later about it, but that's kind of the direction I want to move the transfer station. Like, this is the point where we interact with our population the most, and there's no reason we can't provide a little bit better service down there. But let's help folks.
But is TJ working for the town, or is he just there?
He's working for the town.
Okay.
Yeah, he's the newest member of the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
We still have that one position open, by the way, that Rouschabout position, is that he filled out?
No, that's what he filled out.
Oh, he filled it. Good, good, good.
Yeah, he's doing a great job. He fits right in. From my office, we have a monitoring visit from the VCDP Vermont Community Development Program on Friday. They're going to be looking through our documents for the town hall project. Liz and I have pulled all that information and sent it to them, sent it to them already for initial review. I'm working on right-of-way research for the sidewalk project downtown. I got to get that done by mid-July. And I did finish a big grant for the park and ride and park lights grant that we're moving forward with, that project. I think I asked for another 500 and something thousand. So, yeah, we went big on that one.
Good luck.
Yeah, if they don't pay, if we don't pay us out here, I'll ask again at another grant. We have some, we have some time. Oh, and I forgot to mention, so we did have a complaint about a sinkhole on the sidewalk on, I think it was Canarvin and?
Canarvin and First Street.
First. And the guys did go and cut that out and patch it.
It's bad fix, yes.
Yeah, there's a little, there's a little bit of blacktop still sitting there. We're going to scoop that up when we're down there working. And, let's see, Saturday is the end of our fiscal year, so July 1 is the start of the fiscal year. As of right now, 010, your general fund, we're at 99.34% spent. So we're going to be right, right at 100%, if not a little over. So we're going to see what that looks like. 030, the highway department is at 101%. They're about 11,000 over, and that is, that had a lot to do with fuel, fuel and repairs is just what it boiled down to. So I'm glad to put this just right behind us. And for our multimedia extravaganza, I have a couple of questions for the board regarding the downtown project. So in front of you, I had one of these sitting on the table. Pull up my big screen. So on the first page, this is the, this is, that's out.
Just thinking about it.
Okay, so that's, that's out in front of the block where the Wooden Soldier sits. That's the, that's the big project portion right there. For the board today, there's checkered portions. We're thinking about turning that into, instead of adding grass or something that grows and will require maintenance, we're thinking about adding a colored, colored concrete, something green or something kind of, well, whatever the board wants, I guess. So that's what I'm here to ask. Does the board want to add a color, and if so, do you have a preference of color?
Can you do brick mold kind of thing?
We can.
That'd look a little more...
I think it'd be better than grass, really less maintenance. Clean it once a year, salt and dirt.
Yeah, bring a leaf blower through and knock the stuff off of it, yep. And then, so the hash marks there, and then there's some hash marks down here too, same thing. This, this strip here, these long strips on the south side, the engineer had that as a strip of grass. If I know how maintenance happens on that strip of grass, it'd become all weedy. Yeah, so I thought the best thing to do would be to just, it's got to be concrete anyway. There's cement there. They're going to put in a sidewalk, why not just make it that much thicker and then drop in that little hash? So...
Must, must we give you the decision today, or is it something we can think about?
No, mull it over.
I mean, I...
It's slate blue. I thought that. What would that look like in a few years?
What would slate look like? Sorry. I like slate. I know, it's too slippery.
It's too slippery.
More slippery than anything else.
Concrete.
There's all those people in the last 300 years walking on Slate sidewalk, how many do you know fell?
Again. If we want to change our ordinance...
We're not talking sidewalk, but we're talking that border between it.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's the border there.
You know, particularly here, just make the sidewalk wider, right?
I would, I would almost...
Instead of putting any kind of hash in?
I think that would be almost be better to have a wider sidewalk.
Be cheaper, wouldn't it?
It would. No color, no, no houndstooth, no nothing, just cement?
I don't know why not, but somebody else come up with a reason why not. And I hate to lose the, the grass, but I get, I get it.
You guys want to mull it over and think, you want to think about it?
I'm going to move that we do that. Just think about it a little bit.
And isn't there, is there another time where we'll get input from, you know how this project, we had, when we met in the fire station, we got input from people about the sidewalk. I'd like to think as we get closer, there should be one more time. This is the last place we are, where we are on this here.
Yep, so, I was going to say, so we're, these are the, these are not the final plans. We got to get through this and get through the state comments on these, then we move to the final plans, and I was hoping to do something with, with...
That would be good.
Because we've had, we, this, I don't know if this is going to sound right. We don't have to, but since we've been doing this project, we've had two extra meetings in addition to the meeting that we had to have. But this is, this is a big thing, so we're trying to get, get the idea out there.
Yeah, I mean, my sense was from when we had the meeting in the, in the fireplace, there's some feeling and some emotion around the sidewalk. So I'd like the air on the side of, of more involvement and communication.
It's not so much the sidewalk, it's the triangle.
Right, at the other side, but as long as we're, let's...
If we got some time, let's, let's mull it over, let's talk about it next, next meeting. Get your yays and nays all in, in your thought processes, and we'll go, go from there.
And I got two, two, let's see, got that one. Two more questions. So there's the memorial slates that are currently sitting out by the trees along the sidewalk. We need to decide what happens to those, and would the board like to move those underneath these trees here, or maybe something in the park? You got to think.
My point of view is keep them close to where they came from. If there's going to be trees there, that seems like a lot, but let's think about that part of the whole thing. So we get, everybody gets a chance to mull it over.
There is some trees going back in there.
Not on the sidewalk, but in the little, so not, not along this section here.
In the green area, there'll be some small shrubs type of...
In the, in the, in the green area, you're going to have fruitless, I think if they call it fruitless apple, they flower pink in the spring.
Flower, flower crab.
Flowering crab. That'd be nice. Oh, that'd be real nice.
And then the, the other, the lower growing shrubs are going to match pretty close to what's going on in the park and ride.
Why couldn't the memorial slates be incorporated into that strip that you were just talking about here?
That's not a bad idea either. The other, the other thing that I've seen done at the, at the, this, or not this, the veterans' house in Rutland, they sold memorial tiles, which would be the same equivalent, and made a little, nice little patio. They're all together, and so maybe we could incorporate something like that. That way we might be able to sell some more and make a, make a, you know, find a home.
Like right in here?
Yeah.
Because that's going to be, that's going to be concrete, so...
Well, maybe that's a place to embed some, some memorial tiles.
You know?
Yes.
When, when I was a youth, from probably the bump out to down by the Londer Matt was slate, was slate, in cement slate, sidewalk, that was a sidewalk. And people were coming out of the AMP and the Grand Union at the time, which were both up there, and nobody fell down.
How many people slipped?
None that I know of.
That, that, and then last thing, something to mull over along with the color. The state has asked us if we wanted to consider for this green space, if we wanted to do something of a more urban plaza.
What that means?
I think they mean, I think by that they mean something more of a hardscape with, if you think of Boston where they have these big concrete places with trees just kind of poking out every so often.
Anyway, can you give us an example of what it looks like?
I can't. Yeah, that might be helpful.
When you have a chance, maybe we should just mull that over the rest of it.
Who suggested this or asked?
The state in their comment. But my response back was, well, it was already concrete. Why do you want us to make it concrete? Raised concrete now is pretty much what they're saying. So, but yeah, I'll bring some examples and...
Or even ask them what they're talking about, you know? Have them, because really it's, if the comment is coming from them, it's all their perception after so.
The whole idea nowadays is to get away from urban concrete and get to green space. It's, it's a cooling effect.
That's what I thought.
Maybe things have changed again. Who knows?
I got one last thing for you guys.
Oh, you keep saying.
Sorry. We're coming on time to set our tax rate sometime next week. It always lands on the, between the third and the, that first week of July, it always lands then. So I'm going to blast out an email rather abruptly saying, hey, we need to set the tax rate. And that's all determined based on when the state gets us the school rates. So that's, that's coming.
We'll have to meet here for a quick meeting.
Yep. Okay, and the promise must be up again.
I don't believe that for a minute. But, okay, I'll hold you to it. Any questions for the town then? Okay, old business, which would be parking on North Mann Street. Just because we schedule it for 10 of 8, unless anybody has anything to say, we'll just go by. If those guys show up, we'll revisit it. That's all right with everybody. But in the meantime, we're kind of all consensus of board, there's not a lot we can do there. Is that correct?
The only, the only thing we could do is like Glenn mentioned, they park there now anyway. The only thing, the possibility would be to, you got your signs, okay? There's so many feet from that intersection in all three ways, all four ways there. The only possible thing, maybe, is to have like one handicap park legally, just on a Sunday morning, if that's possible. I don't know. It's the only thing I can think of.
And that doesn't, that still makes it a bad intersection to get out of.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, no matter what.
And I think we'd have to entertain developing handicap spots for a lot of other entities.
Yeah, I really think that this should be, this should be the project of, I mean, I realize they probably don't have anything to do with it, but I believe they should take the lead on this. If they want, if they want to propose something, that's fine, but you know, it's, you know, they...
Find something over by...
Give us something that you want, I mean, ask for something and then...
Apparently, there's never been a driveway for that church, is that what you're saying?
I don't, I don't doubt it. I mean, people walked a lot when that church came up. I mean, that church was incorporated in the 20s, or maybe, maybe a little later than that, but...
Because even if, like across the street, there's tons of driveways, so you really, there's really not a good parking.
Yeah, it really is.
All the way down through there.
The only thing that strikes me as a private solution is maybe on Steve Smith's side foundation, that maybe they could take what little bit of strip of land they got there and put something, but I don't know.
I mean, I think it's just, it's, whatever they propose or we propose is just not going to be enough, because they were talking about something like four or five handicap spots. There's, that's just, you can't have them. Unless you, I mean, the other thing I could think of is if some of the parking spaces in front of the houses on North Main, if those were put as handicap spots, but still we're going to get pushed back for that too.
Didn't we run into the same, the same thing with the Catholic Church at one point? Weren't they asking for something on Washington Street at one point?
They wanted a crosswalk.
They all crosswalked, that's what, sorry.
Just before I got here, I think they dropped that crosswalking.
Yeah, that's right. That's what it was. Thank you. Along the same lines we...
But I, I think we'll wait until the time here and then make the call.
All right, we got plenty to talk about here, the right-of-way. So we'll go to that and revisit that if the folks come in.
This right-of-way, this is the request for a right-of-way to run power cable from the solar field that's going up on Bulger Road, which is north of Airport Road, down to the land on the, across from the trailer park.
No, where, Bulger Road is south side.
I'm sorry, not Bulger Road.
We're talking Munger Road.
Munger Road, thank you.
Had me going.
Thank you. Yeah, Munger Road.
From Munger Road to where?
There's an empty...
Airport Road.
Yeah, there's an empty spot of land across from the trailer park.
Couple questions on top, which is not exactly relevant to this, but are we able to tax that power line?
I think power, I will have to ask the listeners, but I know you can tax poles, and I don't know about buried cable.
Well, that was the other question I had, and thank you, by the way, Joe, for providing me that document. I'm sorry I didn't get back to you earlier about that. But my question is, is what exactly is the license holder going to be doing for the town? I mean, are we simply just giving them the right-of-way, you know, at, at no cost, or is he paying any sort of fee or?
At this point, what this says is no, there's nothing. And that's why I wonder, when, when they proposed the huge power line coming down Champlain, under Champlain and through Fairhaven, there was a significant tax, property tax on that.
Right.
Significant, and it seems like there should be something there. I mean, we're obviously going to be able to tax the property itself, and I don't know, at that point, is it worthwhile, first and foremost? But they're coming down our road, and I'm not sure.
It's, it's not a public use, it's a private use, and, you know, I think that at the very least, we should be asking for something. I don't, I mean, again, I'm less familiar with Vermont law on this subject than you probably are, Joe, but I think that even some sort of a de minimis, de minimis license fee or something like that every year, I mean, even if it's, if it's minimal, it's something, you know?
Every little bit.
Every little bit, right. So...
I guess, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead, finish.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, Mr....
I guess for me would be, what is the property tax going to be on the project itself? And at that point, is it worthwhile to get something else from them now? Much as they say they're going to maintain that, once it's buried, once it's put back, and once they put the road back to the way it is, we, we're going to eat any maintenance on that road.
And if there's any, if there's any subsistence or any, any problem that power line creates, it's going to be our...
And we, yeah.
Well, I don't know, the power line won't really be right in the road anyway, it'll be on the side.
It's on the, on the side of it, but still. But like I said, the...
Or, or maybe we could, maybe Bob, we could put something in the agreement that they're responsible for any, you know, problems that are created by that, because I mean, I don't...
Thought I read that in here.
Right, the agreement said they were going, they were going, they were going to put the road back, I think it said, but Munger Road, when they come down through there, because it's not in the best shape in the world, and so I'm, I was thinking along your lines that if when they put that in, they, part of the agreement is they're going to...
They improve.
Improve Munger Road, because there's some pretty good, I mean, our, our part of that is, you know, that big pile of stuff that we got from pavement, the city next to the thing, we'd even throw in if they want to take some of that and put it down there.
If their only responsibility is just to put the road back, if they can put it back in as bad condition as it was.
And so I would want, I would like to think it's probably to their advantage that they would also want to have a pretty good road to go up, to service their, their solar array anyway. So I, I think it would be a pretty easy thing to, to do. I just don't know what the wording would be to do that.
And whether this is the, the place to do that.
Right. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Let me ask you, Joe, I mean, are there any other, have we granted any other rights of way recently that have proven, where there's been some sort of benefit offered to the town, or?
No one. I've done two since, two besides this one, and no, there's not been a request for, for any kind of fee or funds. Typically, I mean, if so, if just, so GMP puts in a new power pole, it's kind of the same thing. It's like, are we going to, it's like, are you going to pay us for the power pole?
The difference is, I don't think that this, this solar array, that GMP at least, we're all, we are all on GMP, so I guess you could argue it's a public benefit. But with this solar array, exactly what is coming back to the town from that other than the property tax?
I, I think, it says that there's maintenance, that operations of the right-of-way in such a manner are not to interfere with repairs of Munger Road and Airport Road or public convenience in traveling upon Munger. It doesn't say they're going to do that, it's the same. It says, we're going, they're not going to interfere.
With our...
So, so I think it's, I think it's pretty important that, like Glenn says, that we get a good road up through there from them, and...
Right, don't want them coming back after that.
It may not be in this right-of-way, but it may, you know, there should be some sort of something, because the right-of-way is probably the most important part, other than actually building the infrastructure, the other infrastructure to have. I mean, they've got to have that, they've got to get to, to power. The other thing, at one point, they talked about maybe doing a substation up there across the way where that's, where that ends up.
Substate, uh...
To change the substation from where it is.
It's, yeah, they scuttled that.
Of course they did. Why? Because that would help Fairhaven?
I don't know why. I think it was wet on that small piece of land was what the reason was.
Move it. Yeah. Never ceases to amaze me. There's a lot of good talk until it comes right down to actually spending the money.
So this is, so this is kind of our, just thinking about, this is, this is our pressure point on these folks. I think to Jason's point, it might be a good time to, and to your point, maybe we can, not to be a bad neighbor, but squeeze them a little bit and see what you can get.
I mean, I don't think it's being a bad neighbor at all. I mean, we're giving them something extremely valuable, and it's not coming back like a GMP pole would. So certainly, I don't think it's, I mean, obviously, we can't be predatory with it, but at the same time, we don't want to drive away business, but at the same time, I think it's fair that they, that, you know, we get something out of it, whether it be a payment or repairs or improvements.
Like, at some point, you know how we started putting that crushed pavement from the north end down and stopped, and we have that section in the middle, and we have that huge pile there? I wouldn't be mad if we looked to tell them that, hey, we, we want you to finish that.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, it's going to be on the side, like behind where the, the old archery place was, is that what I'm...
It'll be on by that hedgerow, it'll be kind of digging. But I'm saying, with their, their solar... But I'm saying, with their, their solar, with the solar panels up on the other end. They're going to, and everything else, so there's, I think.
If they're going to have to tear up the road in any, any significant manner to put the line down, I can't imagine it's going to cost them that much more to, to improve.
To improve that road, and then we become, we kill two birds with one stone.
Let's think of another thing, too, we have to change the designation of that road from a class four to class three, and therefore have to maintain it for, for, um, all seasons.
Because they pave it?
No, because they, they've improved it, and they're going to need to use it. They're going to need to get there in the, in the wintertime, is it going to be our responsibility to?
No, that'd be, that'd be on them, just like anybody, any other property owner that has something out on a class four.
They'd have to ask for that.
Right.
It's a class four road now, which means we only have to maintain it in the summertime. We only have to improve it once a year, or maintain it once, once a season. And if we would have, and then, if, we need to understand what, what their, their needs are.
But I, I don't want them going away thinking we don't support the project, we do. It's just, we're a little concerned about what we're shining out.
It's covering our, I mean, we're, yes. How large of a property is this?
It's going to be a hundred acres.
Hundred acres.
It's huge.
It's huge.
It's a big project.
Instead of houses, it's solar, right?
Yeah.
So we're losing potential.
Right.
Uh, yeah, and, and particularly, it, there's no benefit if they've scrapped the, the potential of having the, the substation up there.
To me, that the real big one was getting, that we, we need some station upgrade, and if that's not even figured in anymore.
Oh, maybe, maybe I misunderstood, the substation, the new substation is going in. That is going in, it's just not going in on the town of Fairhaven's land.
Where's it? No, no, it was going to go up on Bishop's Land.
It's still going there.
Okay, they're still going to do that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I tried to sell them some town land. They, they said it's too wet for that.
Then that's a different story.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
I'd be perfectly happy, I just would want to ask them about that section of road that we need to bring up to at least the class four standard, what we, we started coming down with that. If they did that, and I'd, I'd say, okay, uh, that's, we're getting something from it. I hadn't thought of, not against saying, okay, is there, is there some kind of annual stipend or something?
Well, yeah, I think that, I mean, to your point, now that we've talked this out, I think the real, real issue is maintaining the road. And so rather than taking a flat stipend, maybe it should just be a stipulation that they improve, that they improve that part of the road, plus they maintain.
Because I think it's their own advantage, that they'll probably do their own plowing of that to, to go in and service it.
One would think that, and then they're going to come to town hat in hand, it's like, okay, go ahead and plow our.
As long as they understand it's a class four.
It's a class four road, so we don't have to maintain it in the summer, in the wintertime. However, they need to understand that.
Yes.
So they, the other question I have about this is, uh, the agreement, and the, the last number six, or number six, not the last, it's number six, um, it, um, it says that they, um, if we give them the, um, if we give them the right of way, they don't necessarily have to build the project. Do they contain, do they retain the right of way, or is that returned to the town period?
No, it's returned to the town, we had that language put back in, that once it's, once the project is done.
It's not in here. Any decision being within the town, solar, Fairhaven Solar, sole discretion.
Two C, I think.
Two C, two C permanently, oh, permanently discontinued, used to look like, associated with Munger Road.
It said, should Fairhaven Solar exercise its rights under the session, the right of way granted to Fairhaven Solar under this agreement shall be deemed revoked.
There you go.
That's, that's where I.
All right, I missed that.
That's where I saw that, because I was concerned, if, if Rod was here, he'd be saying, okay, where's, where's to get out of here?
Exactly. Another thing I just thought of is that, you know, another, another concern we have is if they are not responsible for all of the maintenance, what happens if we are maintaining it and sometime, and we damage their line?
Right.
I mean, that could be a huge expense.
Yep.
And you know they're going to, you know they're going to come right after us for that, so. In other words, if we, in other words, if they are, if they put the line in, and they put the road over it, and they are not responsible for maintenance, and we are.
Of the road.
Of the road, what happens if we, if in, in the course of our maintenance, we damage the line at some point? Because they're, that, I'd rather leave all of the liability on them.
Yeah, yeah. That would always be our liability, though, Jason. It's.
Those are just town road.
Well, the maintenance is on our road, that's buried, that's buried deep enough. There's the, we call it mist digging, where I'm from, the dig safe. So whenever we're doing roadwork on even downtown, or on the shoulder of the road, you call it dig safe. That's, that's not a question, are there utilities there? And then dig safe comes out in a couple of days, marks it out, says, yeah, don't dig there. So, but that's, that's the case for everywhere.
Just a question, I, I know we have a water line that comes down Munger Road. Is this underground electrical line going to be right next to our wa, I'd say, I don't know if our water line comes down inside, under, one, right, left?
I think that's further.
I just.
To the west. If it's coming down Munger Road and Airport Road to the Bishop property, to the substation, it's going to be in that same path.
I, I, I just, I'm trying to, right, I'm trying to visualize.
I just thought it was, the water line was over farther, but that may be.
It, I, I was trying to visualize just the water line, as you're going up Munger Road, on the left side of the road, and the line's going to be on the right, the power line's going to be on the right side? Is it on the right side by the hedgerow? And when they go digging, I'd be more concerned that they would hit our, our main waterland coming down. And we, and we have a major water issue.
That's a dig safe.
That's a dig safe, but I'm, but I'm saying, and it was more, and, and I don't need to see it here, but I'm just trying to visualize where that's going.
I, I have to look now, I, I don't know if that water.
It's on each side of Airport Road, as you come into the underpass.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't.
I don't, what I was thinking more, far, farther out, so, yeah, okay, you're probably right.
I think you're in the same zip code, yeah, I agree.
One other question.
I think we should meet, I should, I think, I think we should meet with the folks up there and see what their plans are.
Do they, do they have a, I'm sure they've got plan, they've had plans for the, for the construction. Could, I mean, could they send us a copy of that, so we can answer all these questions?
The, the, that was my last, or my last question, was, uh, this has got to go in front of the planning commission anyways.
Right.
The whole project.
Um, I thought there, you went to the planning commission. They, they met with Rutland Regional, have they not met with you guys?
Not that I'm aware of.
That I do, I can't answer.
Which would be the place to ask all those questions.
I agree, that, that's where, I, I think what they're trying to do is get their right of way.
They're doing it backwards.
Right, a little, a little ahead of the game.
Well, I, I can see them wanting to do that, have their ducks in a row before they get to the planning commission, but.
Right.
But, but it also, when I read this right of way agreement, I was, uh, it also had some verbiage in there about, we would not, we would support their, guarantee support of the, the town's support of the project by signing this as well.
Yeah, yes.
And I, and I'm going, uh, that one, that one, I, when I read it, I said, okay, I support the project. I'm not sure, uh, uh, when, when they start doing their, becomes really well-known that the project's going in, what, what we might hear.
Yeah.
Right.
And I, and I think that, uh, I, I get what they want to do about the fifty-foot setback, instead of whatever that's supposed to be, a hundred footer, or it'll be less than a hundred. I think that has to be ZVA, doesn't it? I, I think they've got a couple hoops to jump through that town.
I, I can't speak to ZVA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, give that. Let's get, um, get Phil involved and see where that part of it, so. Because I, I'm sure they have to, they have to come to the planning commission at least. And I know, in a project this big, there'll be a site visit, which is a public meeting, that anybody can go and ask questions. And that will be a good place to get all that out.
And, and once you get, I mean, I'm just trying to think of.
Which is where?
Yeah.
Right before the horse.
Exactly. I, I, yeah, we, we need, this, this needs to be reviewed more, and at more levels, so.
Has this gotten from any of our legal people?
Yeah.
I, I don't want them to think we don't support the project, because I think it's a great revenue generator, it's a, it's a, it's a good project, but it's got to go through the process.
We've got to do due diligence here, and so, and I think that there's nothing wrong with us asking it, and that's not, not indicative of anything. It's just basically, we're doing our job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I got, no, I want to make sure I got everything the board, uh, said, we want them to replace, I'm going to say replace the road, but finish the road from the, the pavement down to the gate. We want them to finish the, um, that, we want plans supplied. Um, why not ask for a fee? If you, if you guys don't mind, I don't mind asking for.
I don't either, I, I.
Don't get what you asked for.
A fee, a fee or, or a maintenance agreement of, that has some value to it.
Payment in lieu of taxes. I mean, that's. It's slightly separate than the actual project, and it, there is historical, um, precedent, because that was what was going to happen with that, um, that cable coming through town. Although there wasn't going to be any other infrastructure, which there is in this project, so there's a little bit of difference, but.
I think the overall philosophy should be no freebies from Free Haven, and that varies.
Free Haven, yeah.
There you go. Okay, maybe.
Freudian.
Maybe, maybe so.
And then I'm going to loop Phil in and make sure that they're dealing with the ZVA and the planning commission.
Yeah.
Did I capture that?
Yeah, yeah.
Everything?
Yeah.
All right, easy one.
Yeah.
It says they will supply the town with a final act of drawings.
Yeah, which, that's, that's what we'll have, we'll need. There's not a lot in solar projects, there's not a lot that the planning commission has say over. But part of it will be probably the road, and, and the access, and the in and out, egress, that kind of thing like that. We can't say we don't like solar fields, and we can't say no. Um, but we, we can, the particulars.
Yep.
And I, and I think that, uh, the fifty feet, uh, they want less than that. And I, and I can get that, there's probably not fifty feet of buildable space on the side of those roads. But without a whole bunch of really tough work, so, for, for not something. Okay, so we'll revisit this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought they were looking for an agreement soon.
Well.
No?
Nothing, nothing happens in a hurry.
Not with local government, it doesn't.
I mean, I, if they were that concerned, they should have been here.
Exactly.
There's some, there's some questions, and, and that, this kind of thing, you know, it's. We don't want to be burnt, we got, there's a couple of questions. Nothing, nobody's saying no, and nobody's even again it. We just got to, we got to, the town's got to be.
I appreciate Jason sending it, it's like, don't, don't give away the, don't give away the farm.
Yep.
That's, that's happened a lot.
Okay, so those are tabled for future. Truck loan approval.
Truck loan, so this is the, the little truck that we, we've already purchased. Um, this is just finalizing the loan. Uh, we held off, we were supposed to get the big truck, um, sometime in June, but it didn't show up. So we wanted to do both loans at the same time, on the same bill. But it's the end of the fiscal year, and they pushed my, they, they, they pushed the envelopes, and now we have to do one loan, and then a loan for the bigger truck after the fiscal year. So this is the approval of that, and then the tabs, or the space for the board to sign.
Multiple places?
I'm sorry?
Is there multiple places?
There are three places for the board to sign, they're all tabbed off.
Is there, is there a dollar amount to this loan?
This loan is for thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
For the used truck?
For the used truck.
So you're looking, I'll make a motion that we sign the loan agreement for thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars for the used truck, for DPW?
Second.
Second.
Everybody know what we're doing?
Uh, question, um, what do we, what are our terms on that, and what's the interest rate, just curious?
It's, so for, for municipalities, for equipment, we can only do five years at a maximum.
Right.
And it was five percent.
Absolutely, for where?
Five point oh six percent.
Five point oh six, yeah.
Cheap.
Nowadays.
They give us a good, a real good question.
All right, we got it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
And the loan is from where?
Community bank. So the municipality can't borrow for longer than five years unless it goes to the voters, uh, for approval. And we can only take loans out for certain things, um, and equipment is one of those things.
All right, let's do, do the new business that we didn't have until now.
Did you want to talk about North Parkman with me?
Wanted to give him four more minutes.
No, it's, yeah.
Four more, four more minutes, and at seven fifty, we'll.
Yep.
So this is a, uh, this was a request, excuse me, request from Dan Gray, who's the owner of Slate Valley Electric. He'd like to have credit at the, um, transfer station. This is just so he could dump his garbage, um, and then we bill him on a monthly basis.
Yeah, that we do for.
A lot of our businesses.
Yep. Do you need a motion for that?
I, I just need a motion and an approval, there's no place to sign on this.
I make a motion, and we, we grant it.
I'll second that motion.
Everybody know what we're doing, and who we're doing it for?
Um, meeting for Slate Valley Electric.
Okay, we're just bill, okay, how are we billing them, or?
Monthly.
Monthly.
We do that with some of the businesses in town, if they request it, and they're in good standing. And as soon as they're not in good standing, it's revoked.
Got it.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You looked at me puzzled.
Well, I was just thinking, I've only had one, I've been here almost six years, and we've only had one, one cus, one customer that was struggling to pay.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen often.
No, and, yeah. They're businesses, they just makes their accounting a lot easier. All right, trustee of public funds, you have some volunteers.
I do, so this is to, um, fill Mary Phelps', uh, position on the trustee of public funds.
How many years?
I don't know, it doesn't say.
Quite a while, though, I assume.
I'll make it three years.
Oh, you mean, um, for the position? It's, it's to fill the remainder of Mary's, um, Mary's.
Whatever that is.
Yeah, whatever that, I thought you meant how long was Mary on the?
Oh, she was on there a lot, yeah, I wouldn't.
So we have, uh, Jean Tobin, if I said that correctly, I hope I said that correctly, I apologize if I didn't.
June?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
So we just, oh, we have more than one for the.
Jean Tobin.
Yeah, we have two. And then, uh, Judith Ger, G E V R Y.
Judy Gevery.
Judy Gevery.
Gevery, Judy Jeffra, yep.
Just a question, so when you're, when we're filling these, and the fact that we didn't warn this before, is the normal process, because I'm, I'm thinking, when we've had more than one person, it's easy when you got one. When I have two, I, I want to ask the clarifying question. Shouldn't we warn this and let them come and talk to us, just like our health officers did, before we? That way they can tell us what, about why they wanted, about themselves, and, and we can, uh, we can ask any questions. To me, that, I feel more comfortable than us sitting here, making a decision on two applications without getting that. I, I'm just saying that's, that's what we did in the past, I, I was wondering why we're doing it differently. I, I'm just saying that's, that's what we did in the past, I, I was wondering why we're doing it differently.
All right, well then, I'll make a motion that we table this and we warn it, uh, for the next meeting and allow the candidates to come in and speak with us.
That, that was, 'cause, 'cause my, one of my, my concerns...
Your second to that?
Second.
I was, I was, I was gonna say I'll second.
One of my concerns, we seem to, we do a lot of, of coming here and amending and adding to the agenda and that's, that's a slippery slope. The reason you put an agenda out is so people know what you're talking about and if they wanna come and be part of the discussion. So I, I... Feel bad on that.
I think, I think that's...
And also people, if, if people are concerned, they can also come in and, and be here too, so...
Yep.
My summary was...
Well, we got a motion on the table.
Yep, we do. Um, yeah, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's tabled as well. We're dropping things like flies here. It is, um, 7:51, doesn't look like we're gonna get visited by the folks from St. Luke's.
I'm looking for a motion. I'll make a motion, you know, I, I was the one who wanted to hold off for years, I, I'll make a motion that we live to our ordinance that we have and, and basically we deny the request for the, uh, additional parking places closer to the building.
Your second.
We live to our ordinance.
Um, I'd like to may propose an amendment to that, is this, is that we deny, um, their request without prejudice, in other words, if they can bring it to us in a cogent manner, in an organized manner, at a later date, we consider it again.
Mm-hmm. I'll make that motion with that, without prejudice.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody understand what we're doing? We're saying no, but we're all, we're open to, we're open to, uh, a logical solution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you. Water and sewer. We have little little or no wiggle room on this except, except the options that, um, that Joe gave us.
If, unless anybody really, really has anything that they need to... You do?
I, I do and I have a fifth option. I, I looked at the options and I don't like any of them, I, I wanna propose a fifth option.
All right, well, look, then go ahead with the line item, if you have line item problems.
No, I, no, when, when I'm, when I'm looking at this right here, the only thing in the budget, Joe went and made the changes that we agreed on from last meeting to adjust, made the adjustments, he also, I see you, you adjusted the admin salary as well.
Yep.
From the, from the, the line item page, the only thing I see left for us to discuss and what I see how these numbers are put together correctly, if I'm wrong, Joe, is that, uh, it was either with a, uh, reserve funds at $40,000 with the two reserve funds at $20,000 and, uh, the, the, the reserve funds, the other, the third option was the reserve funds for water and sewer, $10,000 or zero were the, were the three options. But all, we're, we're talking about the capital improvement line item, that's the...
Right.
That's really what this is all about.
Yep, the reserve fund allocation.
And there were, when I looked through that right there, the, the first question, I think we talked about the last meeting, was what do we have in the capital improvement fund for water and sewer already? And it looks like the document that Joe gave us says that water capital improvement already has $372,715 in it. We put our minimum, uh, funding at $250,000, uh, and I'm looking at the funding policy, uh, just so... And, uh, there was a target funding of, it said a million, I, I think that was a bit high, but I, I'm just saying with $372,715, if we need to put a roof on, uh, go put a roof on your, your water plant. But I'm, I'm saying that this is not the year that we need to, I don't wanna put anything into water capital improvement. That's the option five I'm having is to put zero into water. When I look at sewer capital improvement, that we only have $37,089 left. Uh, this is, 'cause we used most of that funding when we put the new tran, uh, wastewater plant in. So we need to try to get that sewer improvement fund back to the minimum level of 250. That I'm saying, well, uh, option five, I'm saying put zero into water and put 20,000. When I look at the option of, option three said 10,000, 10,000, which would've been $20,000. I'm saying put the $20,000 on sewer so that I can bring that up to 57,000, I'm starting to work that back. I did some analysis and what got me there, just saying why, how you got that option. If we took option one, which was putting 40,000 into both, I just took what I spent for the past year in water and sewer, which is, is, is basically a consumption rate of, of five and six. I'd have, uh, an annual increase of $153.24, that's for two people. Option two, when I did the math and, on, on what was done, I put, did the math on that, it would've been an increase of $29.48 per year. Option three was $17.82. The reason I'm saying that, and option four was zero, there still would've been an increase, the increase would've been $5.94. I don't, I'm not saying don't put nothing in either of them, but I'm saying that, uh, the increase of 17.82 felt right. I knew I was between two and three and when I looked at the reserve thing, what got me to putting zero in that is, just to help you with my logic. I also, and just, just putting some data together to make sense on it. Last year, our water and sewer, when we did our increases, caused a $27.14 annual increase. The year before that, with the increases we did was $31.25. It looked like since we put the new meters in, we were doing, you know, close to $30 per year of, of increase. So yeah, uh, option two that said spend 20,000 and 20,000, if you still, 'cause I wanna, no offense, I can tell you what I'm proposing, but I wanna be, make sure you see the whole thing. Option two that said put 20,000 in each of them would cause an annual increase of $29.48. So yeah, it's in that same range. The reason... No, per, per...
Per year?
Per year, per year, that's what the increase would be. Now understand that's, I'm doing that, the numbers I'm giving you are based on consumption of five, six, five, six, uh, of, of what my consumption was.
Are you on sewer?
I'm a water and sewer bug.
Oh, okay.
And, and that's, that's what I'm saying, it's a real number for two people and I like to think I'm pretty conservative on how I use water. So it's easy enough to do the math and say, what if I was a family of four or whatever, you could get a rough idea of what the, what your increases would be. Um, the reason I'm back saying option five, I think we need to put money in capital reserve. But quite frankly, I'm worried about the meeting we're gonna have next week, that this is just one of the many increases our taxpayers are gonna see this year. When, with the, when we set the tax rate, with the edu, the education tax, with paying for what we just voted in and as well as, I, I just think this year...
I, I agree with you, uh, but the only, the only thing, why I'm interrupting you is that I don't want the town to have to be the only fiscal responsible, fiscally responsible people in, in town government. We always say that and it really raises my hackles when, when we say, well, we're gonna get a huge school increase. Well, that's not our fault, we still gotta maintain the town. And we shouldn't have to, we shouldn't have to pull back on things we should do because people are gonna get creamed by the, the school. You know?
Point, point taken, but I, but I would push back and say, we can only control what we can control. I can't control what the outside. What we can control is water and sewer, that again, I probably sound like a broken record, I think it's already high enough and higher than what I wanna pay.
Well, I mean, here's my thought on this, um, I think you will agree with me, it's important that we add, we put money aside for capital improvements. Um, you said that you wanted to get sewer back up to 250,000, right now it's 37,000. If we're putting 20, a, a, a small amount in every year, we're never gonna get there. And, and you know, and to Bob's point, it's like we, we can't stop. Um, you know, I, I don't want us to be in a situation where two or three years from now, because we're trying to keep rates down, all of a sudden something happens and we, uh, and we end up short. Keeping in mind that if you're, what you're saying is that the rates would go up $29 a year, that's less than $2.50 a month. It's very, a very small amount of money. I mean, if we were going, saying 150, 200 a year and putting, then I would say, we're adding a bit of a burden. I think that under the circumstances, considering how low our reserves are, um, I think that we really, I think it's our responsibility to do something more than a very sm, I mean, and again, the $20,000, while it is, it's certainly more than zero, it isn't very much if we're looking to increase our reserves to the point that you discussed.
And the one thing I'm, I don't disagree with, we have to look ahead, we can't be too shortsighted. I've got a brand new sewer plant down there, just bottom, a new pickup truck. What is it that would cause us to feel pain and put 40, 50,000 into, into sewer?
Conversation.
To put, but, but I'm saying...
Nope.
They, on top of their regular, 'cause again, this is in addition to the regular budget.
Well, I mean, I...
I, I, and again, I'm, I'm just...
I mean, we, we have a new sewer plant, which is certainly more efficient than, than, than others would be, the older ones would be. We need to have a, a working pickup truck for them to do their work and so I don't see, I understand, I mean, it, it's not like we, we've given the town gifts by funding, you know, funding our, you know, our, our utilities here, I mean, we, we really have to. So, I, again, I, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to keep things, keep things down and I realize that, that that a lot of these increases are not our fault.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we, I, we really just need, we need to look ahead and I think that, you know, I, I'm, what concerns me and again, from my past life, is that I've always thought that shortsightedness when dealing with long-term issues like this is, can be deadly. And, you know, I agree with you, Glenn, I have no idea right now, sitting at this table, what might happen to the, 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 the plant or what might happen to the system, maybe nothing. But at the same time, I don't wanna be caught having to answer questions, you know, in two or three years if we don't have enough money and there is something there. So, I mean, I certainly agree that we can talk about the amount that we would add to the reserves, but in terms of, of, of lowering it to that point where there's nothing added to water and enough, and a small amount to sewer, I think that that's, that may not be, you know, far sighted enough.
Do you have a, do you have a number in mind?
Well, you, Glenn, you had said that the, um, the, um, the $29 increase, that was giving 20,000 to, to water and sewer?
That is correct.
Okay. My question is this, if, if, where are we in water right now? We're, we're, what is the, what are, we're 372,000?
372,000.
Okay, and what is our ultimate goal? I think it was a million for that one?
Again, when I look at the target funding,
Okay.
that was a pie in the sky, which, what I would, what carries, the number to me that carries the most significance is the minimum funding. And we said 250,000. The reason I'm saying zero in water, again, folks, is saying that the only thing I've heard that's gonna be talking any, for water, it's gonna take any money, they need to replace a roof right now. And I understand that's probably, you've got a rough idea of 50, 60,000?
Something like that, yeah.
To, to replace the roof. It still keeps us above 300,000.
Okay.
And I'm only talking, again, I, I can come back and say, only talking, we're talking right now for this next year of coming up, '23, '24? Then come back and you tell me here's what we're saving for, but af, after looking at saying, experience has said that if it's gonna cost a million dollars a month, we're probably gonna bond it on out. If you think you're gonna save it here, our capital reserves, now, don't have a problem if what you're, if what you're saying is the 20,000 that I wanna put in sewer, that you're saying, boy, I think that should be more, it needs to be...
Funny, again, I mean, it...
40,000 because of, but I heard, did I hear the pumps? And I keep hearing some, oh, yeah, you're gonna have to replace pumps.
Pump station.
Is it two years from now, five years from now, is it 10 years from now? If I'm putting money away, making decisions for 15 years from now for some pumps that were, I wanna see, I wanna know, what are those pumps gonna cost me? And, and, and...
Well, I mean, I'm starting, I'm starting off from the premise that you did, which is that we are, we are grossly underfunded, um, in sewer. And so, and, and that we need to build it up to this target of 250. At, at the rate that you're proposing, you're, that's gonna take us another 10 years. And, and, and at that point, you know, the costs are gonna be going up, you know, along with it at the same time. So I think that I'm worried that 20 is going to be, is, i- if that's the premise that we need to get to that, to a certain target, I just don't think that that's, that that's gonna be enough. And, and again, it might, I mean, I don't want to raise anybody's rates either. Let me ask you this, Glenn, did you calculate what it would be if we added nothing? If we added absolutely nothing to the reserves in, in both, in the categories, how much would our rates be going up?
It was, it was $5.94, water would go up 1.33% and sewer would go up 0.6%. It's option four.
Okay.
And I'm saying, and I'm, I'm saying absolutely nothing going there doesn't work.
No, it doesn't, I agree.
That doesn't work for me. If you're saying that you, for some reason, see, I always like to think, I don't mind putting money aside for something that I've got my mind on or I'm seeing that's out there. But if you're saying that 20,000 isn't enough in sewer and because you think you need more in sewer, well, there's, the sinking funds got 13,073, been sitting there year over year, since all the time I've been on the board, it's been sitting there, not really growing by a whole heck of a lot, uh, but there's money there if you, if, if you need it.
And can, can anybody tell me why we need that sinking fund?
It is, it is the question of the century.
Yeah.
We have gotten as many explanations as there have been people that have been involved. I can't tell you what, what the difference between capital improvements and sinking funds or...
State mandate.
It's in the state, but the sinking fund is, uh, for paying debt, paying down debt or paying off debt. Which, I mean, what the difference between a capital reserve fund, we use that for that process as well. It's, it's an archaic term that I don't...
Could, could we use that sinking fund money to pay down the sewer debt now and be, get rid of it?
I mean, you could use, you could use the 13,000 and zero it out, yeah. I don't see why you couldn't. Zero out this account, but you would just be paying it to the bond.
Does that save some interest on, on, on the wall?
Well, 13,000 on, that's $3 million, a little bit, I guess.
Kind of blending both ideas, 40,000 to sewer, zero to water. Cause water is at a pretty sufficient, or, I don't know, I don't wanna use the term sufficient, but it's at a pretty stable, uh, healthy, rather, uh, reserve fund and, and sewer is not. It grows us faster. It, it, I, I don't know, it, it seems like a better, better option than going with option two and doing 20 and 20.
What if, what if? We're trying to save some money. We're trying to save our four taxpayers some money. What if we did 30,000 in the sewer fund this year, zero in water fund? Uh, the roof, we got plenty of money for the roof, we'd still be over 300,000.
I, I would, I would bet that 60,000 is a little low.
It may be.
But, but anyways, it's still, the argument's still...
We'd still be in that ballpark, so...
The argument's still...
And then next year, you could do a little something different.
The, the other thing to be aware of... The, the other thing to be aware of, the water, we keep hearing about filters, about doing a new filters, the SAM filter system. So, keep that in the back of your mind. That's not gonna be cheap. And it may be a bond, it may be a bond, but there's still gonna be, um, there'd be some matching funds and that kinda thing like that. So, that's something to keep in the back. I don't personally. I personally, either option, the twenty thousand dollar option, either option's good, in my opinion. I think you're right. I think we need to build up the, the sewer first and, and lay off the, the water for a year. But I think the forty thousand would make me feel a little more comfortable than, than.
I mean, that, that was what I was gonna propose as well. So, you, you, I, I agree with that too. I mean, I think that, that let's just do that and then, you know, and then that will, I mean, it will be unfortunately an increase, but you know, I think that it leaves us a little bit in better shape, um, moving forward. So, that's my thought on that.
Yeah, it's just.
That will, that will bring us, that'll keep us at that thirty, when, when I looked at option two, cause then when you take, that is forty thousand dollars. The only reason I look at it and say, that's forty thousand. And the difference between seventeen eighty-two and twenty-nine eighty-two, you might have someone say, hey, that's not.
Not the end of the world.
Not the end of the world. I said, understand, the numbers I gave you are based on two people. A family of four, double that. A family of, I, it.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a, it's. I hate, I say this every year. And, uh, it never, never makes anybody happy, but the, the feds and the state think we're cheap.
I think, I think.
They think we're, they think we're, we're, we have very reasonable water and sewer rates. And as a matter of fact, one, and this is a couple of years back, um, we didn't get a favorable, asked favorable loan on something we did because they thought we were. Yeah. Which, all of us looked at each other and said, you gotta be kidding me, but.
Well, but it doesn't surprise me, the feds and the state thinks money grows on trees and they throw it around ridiculously anyway. I mean, I, I, I just, you know.
After a while, it becomes real money.
But, but back to, back to where we are, cause I think we're close. And I don't mean to, just wanted to take all the information that we had.
I appreciate your, uh.
And, and I, and whether it's thirty thousand, cause it sounds like we're down to zero in water this year. Doesn't mean we're not gonna put stuff in water in the future, but it just means for capital improvement. If we went in there and put, can you plug in the, we may be arguing over the thirty thousand or forty thousand, and it's such a small number to your point, Jason. Let's, let's see what that, that, that comes out.
So, just, uh, for your percentage increase on sewer, it would be, uh, five point five five percent increase. And let's see what it looks like for your rates.
Water rate, capital improvement.
So, what numbers are you looking at?
I'm, I'm looking at the screen.
Oh, that thing behind me?
Yeah, sorry. Every, I'm sorry, Bob. Everybody was looking here, but you.
This, this job requires eyes in the back of your head.
Man, this is modern convenience. I am.
So, what do we got?
So, there's your, that's your increase right there of ninety-three cents for the sewer, and then you're at the seventeen cent increase for, uh, water with the zero, um, zero in capital improvement. There is still two thousand in the reserve fund for the vehicles. Um, and they put that there because they did buy a new truck, but they wanted to build, cause two thousand is not a ton of money. Uh, they wanted to build up for when it was time to buy another.
I'm tired.
Could you plug in forty?
Uh, o- over in sewer, or, right here?
Big, one twenty, one twenty-one. Understand the difference when you start talking water and sewer. We have eight hundred and some odd people with just water and no sewer.
No, it can't be that much.
We have nine hundred and twenty-four.
Nine hundred total.
We have, we have about a.
Well, so this number, estimated users is nine twenty-nine.
Eight sixty, they're right there.
Eight sixty.
Yeah, but then eight sixty for sewer.
Nine twenty-nine, so, nine, nine twenty-nine and eight sixty.
It's, it's a difference, yeah.
So, there's only a, there's only a hundred. And less than a hundred.
Sixty, sixty-nine, yeah, sixty-nine.
But I'm, my only point I wanted to bring up is, it's, it's fewer people taking care of the increase that we're, as that, and it's not an increase of what we're actually spending, it's trying to put capital reserve. See, here's the reason I wanted the capital reserve money lower, is saying, I got a small captured group who seem to be doing the lion's share of getting ready for thirty years from now to put the next sewer, wastewater plant. The logic that said, if you wanna get to forty thousand, I'd sooner take and say, how do we get more money when we, when we budget, so that it goes into the overall tax base? And so, so that, because you're putting that, that transfer station and everything, is not just for people to use it, it's for the community, it's for everybody. The same logic. He, so you have to be very careful about just, especially when you're talking capital reserve. You're not talking, this is what I use.
I mean, I, I think that, I think that having the, the water and sewer available, it, it increases, it increases the town's value in some, you know, in, in ways it may not be clear. I mean, the fact that not everyone's using it, I don't think is, has significant a, a concern. Because I think that ultimately, the fact that we have these available, it's gonna attract more people, it's going, it may encourage people in the future, it may encourage people in the future to switch from, from, uh, septic systems to this and, you know.
We have all kinds of capacity for water and sewer.
Yeah, I mean, it's, exactly. We, we, right, we, we have a lot.
We don't, we, I mean, that's a great problem not to have.
Right.
And that's a capacity problem. But I, again, I'm, I'm more thirty, I, I can get to thirty thousand. I'm having trouble myself personally getting to forty thousand. And putting it on the eight hundred and sixty.
That's, that's your point.
I, I just, that's just me.
I mean, look, I, I think that ultimately, at the end of the day, I, you know, if we allocate forty thousand to it, if something, i- if it turns out that we overshot the mark, we can always reallocate the funds. It's not like, it's not like we're.
Once we put the, once we put it in, it'll take a voter, wouldn't it be in March to say, once it's there, it's there. This is not a, a general fund.
I, I shook my head yes, but that may not.
Not me?
Well, it's, so the board is in charge of, cause it's the enterprise fund. I don't know what that looks like for capital funds and then moving, say, between sinking and not. I'd have to look, look up the law on that, cause there are regulations.
I mean, I think there, there are options. And I don't, I, I think if we were talking about, um, you know, the difference, you know, between thirty thousand and a hundred thousand, absolutely, even fifty thousand, but I think forty, I think that's a good, a good number.
I, I don't like that number. But that's, I'm just one vote.
Well, here's where we are. We've got thirty, we've got forty. But we don't have a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we increase the, uh, the sewer reserves by forty thou, we add forty thousand to that, and we zero to water reserves.
Is there a second to that?
Can we think about thirty-five?
Say, I.
Yeah, I'll second it, cause that'll open up discussion.
Okay, thank you. But, the discussion, where, where.
We've had the discussion.
We've had, we've had the discussion. It's, it's really, do you have three votes to put it through?
Right.
I know, I know you don't have one here. I'll tell you.
What's your pleasure, folks? We have a motion on, on the floor. It is, please, if somebody's got something else to say, don't let me stifle that.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just seeing something in my mind right now, some meme of my face. It says, hi, I'm select board member Jason Kupal, and I've made water in Fairhaven unaffordable.
No, it'd be sewer.
Sewer, exactly.
I can't.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, get used to it. Work your shoulders.
Oh, yeah, I got big shoulders.
All right. We're offering forty thousand, and that's the question. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Three, two. So, you'll be in there with some other people.
Forty, forty thousand.
But this is, you and you are no.
Are no's.
Oh, that's exciting. That never happens.
It does now, yeah.
Almost never.
Okay. Um, is there anything else you need from us except to set the water rates? Or do you wanna do that?
Um, can we button it up tonight if you give me?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a second to, I just need to, um, print the, print the rates. And I, I had one question for the board on the rates themselves, on the rate, rates and fees.
Okay.
Um, so in front of you, I printed out a copy of rates and fees. Um, they're not updated, but what I wanted to
Oh, right.
suggest was the, uh, sewer inspection, um, fee.
Okay.
Um, right now, uh, once or twice a month, I'll get, we'll get homeowners call and say, uh, town, your sewer's plugged up, come and fix it. And almost every time, I'm not gonna say every time, but almost every time we send staff out with vehicles and our equipment, it's never the town sewer that's plugged up. So, we're.
When would it ever be the town sewer? I mean, these are, you know, this is.
It's a, it's a main line.
If, I mean, I could see with root impingement or something like that, but for the most part, these things are gonna be people flushing wipes and things like that down.
What, what happens, the only happens for the town is a coagulation of grease someplace. Believe it or not. And it gets out into the main, and then we're, then we're liable. But that's more than, it's usually more than one, one customer.
Right.
So.
Yeah. So, what I'm, what I'm asking the board is, um, if you agree, we can leave the, the, the fee in there for a hundred dollars per call for, uh, a sewer inspection, a plugged sewer inspection, um, which is waivable if the town in fact is liable for that, that plug. What I'm hoping is this will just kinda deter the frivolous.
That's already in the policy, though?
No, I'm, I'm asking it to be added.
We, we'd change that. We'd have to motion to change that.
But, well, let me ask you, Joe, how much is it, I mean, in terms of, of labor and, and supplies, how much is it actually costing us to send somebody out for one of these things?
How big a?
So, how big a problem?
No, I'm curious. You, you put a hundred dollar fee on there, but I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'm trying to see what the actual cost to us is.
Probably costs us more than that, to be honest with you. If you figured, you guys.
Twenty, forty dollars an hour plus a truck, plus a vehicle.
You know, you got two.
Two, you're gonna have two.
This is, this was a round number I was using for one guy, and this, this covers, you know, his salary, the truck, and then I, I factored in insurance. So, this is just a very round number for one person with a truck.
Did you get your question answered? My, so my question is, what, the problem that we're solving, is this something that happens once or twice a year? Is this something that happens once a month? Is this, how, what?
This is a.
What problem are we solving?
This is a, this is a once or twice a month issue, where I have to
Okay.
uh, send somebody from DPW who, they're already backed up, or, um, somebody from sewer.
And you said, Joe, that there's, it's like, you found one instance where we were, where the town was liable?
Only one time, honestly. It's, and I actually, I think it was actually Sean Tomasi. It's like, it's like, Sean, I'm not sending anybody. And he's like, it's your line.
That's between twelve and twenty-four times a year. And, you know, if, if, like Rich says, it's more than a hundred bucks to send them out, we're, that's a big, big, I mean, you know, we're, we're sitting here trying to fight an extra ten thousand dollars for it in sewer. And if, if this is what we're paying out, you know, this, that shouldn't be. I'm wondering, honestly, and, and I don't wanna be punitive, but I'm wondering honestly, I mean, if, if the hundred dollars is too low.
Probably, as a deterrent, it's probably enough.
You think?
Uh, my, my, my opinion, uh.
We'll tell people when they call, it's like, they come out, it's, and it's, they, it's not our problem, it's, it's a hundred bucks, and they'll, they'll probably back off.
If they call A one A, A one, if that's where it is.
A one?
A one. A one A is the.
Cause the last thing I would wanna do as a taxpayer is call A one sewer, and then charge me to tell me that it's the town's issue.
Well, I mean, at that point, I mean, that's something, well, we can remedy that. If it turns out that they've called a private, you know, contractor, and we, it's our problem, we can deal with that then. But the problem is if we're just going out there again and again, and it's not our problem, you know, and, and we're eating this cost, I mean.
How would we deal with it, though? Would, would we be liable for their bill?
Well, maybe that's probably what we would do, is that we'd just say, you know, okay, we're going to.
And that's happened.
Well, they, they would, what I've seen is they'll, somebody will say, that's your, it's your line. And then the, the A one will come in and put a camera on it.
Yeah. And, you know, that's something I think we can deal with when it happens. But I, I really, I, I'm concerned that, I mean, how much, how much does A one charge just for a service call? Hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you know, basically what they're doing, what, what it seems they're doing here is they're getting, they're getting the service cheap. Because if they come out, if we come out and we clear their line, oh, it's not your prob, it wasn't our problem, we're, we're giving them the service for a lot less than the cost on the market. I mean, or, or are we simply going out there and diagnosing?
Or just diagnosing.
Okay, so we're not doing any work at all?
Not unless we have. Everyone understand? Is there a motion that we could have?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the, uh, one hundred dollar, uh, plug sewer inspection proposed by the town manager.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions? We seem to do this backwards all the time. I love it. All those in favor?
What?
Go ahead.
No, you just, your motion is to just leave it in?
Well, this is, this is a new charge. It's a new charge.
It's a, number eight is a new.
Change it to two hundred.
No, 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 no. This, this one hundred dollar charge is brand new. There was not a plug sewer inspection fee before.
Just add to the policy.
Okay.
The rates, I'm sorry. Everybody understand what we're doing?
I think so.
All those in favor?
I, I, I think.
Those opposed?
No.
I could feel that something, there was a vibe there.
I think paying up taxes, a, a service from the town to, to go, if I, if I've got a problem, they help me out on.
I, I.
Especially, especially in a way where.
Like, I, I get that, but then we'll, we'll make complaint about the town not tack on something else.
And I will point out that it is, that it is incredibly common for utilities to put charges like this in. So, I mean, they're, in their schedule.
For the, for the money I pay for water and sewer, it's reasonable to expect that kind of service, for me. But that's just me. So, no.
So, no. This meeting's getting contentious today.
I'm just, I just have one in sewer.
There's a certain group of people in front, are tighter in front of the tree.
We are.
It's just, you gotta watch.
I apologize for being that tight.
No, you shouldn't. You're doing your, you're doing your job.
I'm not saying thrift is a bad thing. It's just where you apply it. So.
How are you with the other end yet?
The other end of what?
The stuff that was behind me.
I've, so I've made the changes. I'll print, if the board approves, if you wanna make a motion to approve the rates and fees, I'll, I'll print it out on my printer in my office and bring it for the board to sign.
Okay. But we don't know what they are right now. For the motion.
So, your water rate is gonna be eight dollars and twelve cents per thousand gallons. The ba, water base rate will stay the same at three, thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents per quarter. The approved sewer rate is fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents per thousand gallons. With the sewer base rate staying the same at twenty-five dollars per quarter.
I would entertain that motion. It's gonna have to be somebody besides Glenn.
I'll make the motion. Thank you.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
No, no need.
Do you wanna just, do you wanna state what, what the, the rates are again, just so we can, just, we have it in the record?
Yes. So, the, the water rate has been increased to eight dollars and twelve cents, which is a seventeen cent increase. Uh, the approved sewer rate is fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents with an increase of a dollar twenty-one per thousand gallons.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we have a sewer rate. And we have a water rate. Thank you, folks.
Okay, I'll print that off for the board to sign.
Yep.
Do you need to sign, do you need to sign this, or?
No, I, I, I've updated the rates. I just need to get you, I just need to get it to print a copy.
Got it.
There we go. Okay.
Um, you want to do the refund or you, you got that running now?
No, I'm, I'm gonna print it. When we go into executive, I'll just hit the button and then.
Okay. Refund and small credit policy.
So should I put the minutes that they signed with them?
Um, I.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess so. They didn't, I didn't want to say yes because they didn't do it yet.
Since I, I was forced.
We voted to sign it, so it's good enough. Uh, refund small credit policy, had a note on that.
Yeah, so this is something, this popped up last year as we've had some changeover in the treasurer and changeover in staff. Um, it, it kind of came up that, you know, we're, these small, these small balances that were held, um, by the town, so if you pay, if you overpay your taxes and you have a small balance of five dollars or less, the town was supposed to just take that money. Literally just, okay, that's ours now, move it into general fund. Um, I'm going to be honest, I broke policy and I did not take people's money. Um, we applied it to next year's balance, um, or if it was a large amount, we sent out letters asking, do you want your money back? But we want to be within our policy. So that's what this is. This is a request to change this policy a little bit. Um, to ask for anything over two hundred dollars, we'll give the, uh, we give it back to the taxpayer. Um, and then a small balance of under two hundred dollars, we just apply it to next year's balance or the, the coming balance.
And this is just for tax payments or is this for other payments as well?
Water, sewer and taxes, correct?
Uh, let me look. I thought it was only for taxes. Taxes.
Tax collection.
Yeah, it's strictly taxes. For water and sewer, they would be, if you, if you pay over, you get a credit anyway. Yeah, there's not a, there's not a discussion. If it's a large amount, there will be a discussion, yeah, there's, we, that never, I haven't had that happen yet, but, um.
When, when you run into, how do they run into overpaying? See, I'm, I'm, when I read this, I, I got.
Escrow maybe?
I, I was trying to figure out how, I'm saying, okay, did someone make a mistake writing a check? And I gave you a hundred dollars more than I needed to. I don't want to wait till next time. I want my hundred dollars.
Yeah, right. I mean, most of this is gonna be.
And when I read this, it says, no, if it's less than two hundred dollars, you're not going to have your hundred dollars back. Uh, it's your next, we're going to hang on to your hundred dollars for the next quarter.
So you're thinking dropping that two hundred down?
I, I think two hundred seems, we went from five dollars in our policy and we took this jump to two hundred dollars. And, and I'm, and, and maybe, I know that it was done because you didn't want to take five dollars from someone. Quite frankly, if I'm on a fixed income, my social security check is eight hundred dollars and I made a two hundred dollar mistake, I don't want to wait one quarter to get my.
Yeah, most of this is gonna be.
To get my money back.
It's gonna be the mortgage.
I, I, I would.
It's gonna be escrow payment.
Right, I, so, so I'm, I'm just saying that, uh, why wouldn't we, I'm, I'm fundamentally saying, someone overpaid. Why don't we just give them their money back?
Joe, how often is this happening?
Uh, so this happens every year.
About, about how many times?
It's, the last, the last instance, I'm gonna say there was maybe thirty, where we had to parse through and say, who are we gonna, who are we gonna ask do they want their money back and who do we want to, um, just roll it over?
So that there were thirty people?
It wasn't a ton of, you know.
I'm, I'm just, just trying to understand because fundamentally, I'm, I think simple. And simple is, I overpaid, give me my, I overpaid.
Are we notifying these people or is, how, how are they become, how do they become aware of this?
Yep, so that would be the, that would be the goal, is to let people know that they have overpaid and give them the option to refund.
Is, is there a kind of written weird, I think that's, I think, we're all trying to do the same thing, it seems.
Right.
I don't see any of us wanting to acquire somebody's money.
Oh, great. It was a weird policy.
Is this terribly burdensome in terms of workflow for our town accountant to issue refunds?
It, um.
Does this happen once a year or?
It, it, so we, we go through and we check at the, at the end of the tax year, right? So, um, it was a, it was a small burden to send out, because you have to go through and see who, who owes what and then send out letters. So it's one more thing that they have to deal, that staff have to deal with.
What if we didn't issue a letter asking? What if we just refunded them?
Use the stamp once, send them their, their money.
Send them their credit?
Yeah, pound money.
That was my only, when I, at that amount, it just seemed like five dollars to, to, the policy went from five dollars to two hundred dollars.
Why don't we just make, yeah, why don't we just make it, if there's a, at the end of the year, if there's, if they're paid over, if they've been over, just cut a check.
And to limit, and to limit the burden, we just do it, like you said, at the end of the tax year.
It's done once, one, one, one stamp, one, I just.
That way she doesn't have to write a letter and then cut a check or write a letter and then get it all, get it all in. It, it's cleaner.
I can see where this would be a problem. She has to write a letter, give them an option. Some are gonna do this option, some are gonna do that.
Some are not gonna respond.
You'll spend months trying to, to, trying, trying to resolve it.
Never get that thing.
Just send them a check and be done with it.
Yeah, that would make it a lot easier.
I think that's the way to go.
I'll, I'll change that to, I'll change this for next meeting.
Do we want to make a, a motion on it now or do we want to wait till?
Let, let me bring you back some language so that way you can.
All right.
I don't want you to approve something that you haven't seen.
Cool.
Thanks. That's, there's your win. You gotta have something, man.
No, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Having been on the, the bad end of a lot of votes, four to one vote. Okay. Uh, parking lot, anything going on?
I'd like to add under, or at least discuss adding under parking lot, transfer station operation. We had anonymous report a couple of things, uh, uh, down there, but we've also, uh, that we've, that we've had to fix. But we, we've had some other discussions, uh, even with the pass board around what the effective use of the transfer station and how we do things. And, and I think if we don't get it on our, put, put it in our sights. And, and I don't know what your thoughts are, Joe.
Glenn, could you elaborate on what aspects of the operations are at issue here?
I, I'll pass that off to.
Uh, so, so what we've, what I've found is that, um, in my time here, that what I hear a lot of is that people expect some better, expect better service from us. And I don't disagree with that. Um, when you pull up, if, and I don't mean to be facetious or rude, but the little old lady that can't move her bag into the, into the compactor, she, she may be struggling with that bag, but I may have a guy standing over here not doing anything. So what I want to do.
Smoking a cigarette in the, uh.
So I, what I want to do is kind of just improve operations and improve, um, improve the service we provide to the town in fair enough.
It's, the idea would be to write across us and have, the, the other thing, if you're gonna do that, let's, let's do the whole thing in a pie in the sky. Um, should we have two weigh stations? The flow is horrible there.
Oh.
The flow is horrible. And I, I'm not sure that there's room for that. I, I almost think that the, that the, the, um, um, hut should be at the gate on the way out. And so you, so you, so you have, and if you had two, if you, if, no, it, it's a cost, but if you had two weigh, weigh station or, or, um, scales on and off and pay on the way out. You know, that kind of thing like that.
Can we just get across to move the, uh, move the hut?
Well, you know, no, I, I'm, like I'm saying, this is pie in the sky stuff. This is.
It's a one, here's right, the, the hut, it's a multipurpose chat.
Right, it, it moves, it, it does the.
You have the compactor.
Right, right, right.
All the controls are there. So you just can't really move.
Well, you'd have to add, but you, but you could separate those guys and they still would be within the safety limits and things like that. They would be, they, you know, if you had somebody collecting and somebody at the.
Phil adds a compactor, really it could be expected to help all the gentleman, the folks if they needed it.
And the flow is just horrific. Um, so the, a redesign of the whole place would be nice. And, and so, let's.
Yeah, I, I mean, and, and a couple of my thoughts on that was saying, uh, is there, I'm always looking for revenue generation. To say, no, but, but if we, once we, we get a good efficient flow and everything, and if we have capacity, why, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we want to accept material at the transfer station from people, from, uh, Benson, Castleton or, or Paul.
And that's, that's been part of our conversation is how do we make sure that gets sustainable? Even seeing what feels like an upward trend in folks outsourcing their trash.
Right, a lot of municipalities just across the border did away with transfer stations.
Yeah, and I, I mean, that may be that we accept trash from haulers.
Right.
You know.
But, but I, I don't know what that would look like, but I'm just saying, open the, the whole thing up. I mean, I remember, Chad, you mentioning something about, about, uh, the municipality does the garbage pickup and we don't have, and we, and we, we're not, we don't need to be open the number of days that we're open. And I, other things. I'm just putting it there to say, probably there's this whole look, probably been a while, to your point of how efficient we are, what are we doing? Maybe we just get it there on our.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I mean, all that is reasonable. It's time to, it's been like that for, since we've had the, the scale. And the, the scale.
Who put that scale?
It was in a bad spot. Every time I go down there, I'm just like, oh my.
What happened was there was, there was a disagreement.
Nah, nah, no.
Come on. I got off the board, I, I didn't, I got off the board at the, in the middle of that. I know that, and that. I didn't voluntarily get off the board. I was haul, I was unceremoniously, unvoted. But, um, so then, um, it ended up in the middle of the, and it just, it, I don't think it's in the right place. And I never, I, I wouldn't have been happy, but anyways, I think it still isn't the wrong place. Um, but the whole idea of, of rethinking that transfer station and what's possible is, is worthwhile. It's worthwhile.
Yeah, I'll start digging in. It's been one of my things over the last six years, so.
But the, the process part of it should be first.
Yes.
And, you know, with what we got now, and then we can expand the idea. And I, and that is something that I bet you there is, there is, um, fundage to support. I, I bet you.
Is the transfer station self-sustaining? I mean.
There, it's not quite. It's close. It's, it's, we were, and that was a rod, that was a rod holtwood thing. And it, it's very close. It was. It, it is. It's, it's.
So I've started talking to folks to re-permit the transfer station. And, uh, the one gentleman, I told him, well, I want to put, you know, just making it available to all towns in the permit, just in case the board does decide to do that. They don't have to, but it's there if you want to. And the first thing out of the gentleman's mouth was, this is a great revenue maker for towns. He said, this being a, a kind of a regional hub for where we sit would be, um, would be worthwhile.
It, it definitely would involve a reconfiguration of the traffic pattern.
What's the, what's the timetable on those permits?
It's every ten years.
Okay.
I mean, you can make adjustments as you go.
Is this, I, I don't know where we stand on the, uh, the demo slab.
This is part of that.
Does it bring it back?
Yeah.
This permitting process?
Yep, that's the goal.
Joe, remind me, what was, I understand there was a complaint recently. Um, what exactly did that entail?
Uh, I think somebody complained about garbage outside the, um.
The compactor?
Yeah, outside the compactor, yes, but as it was kind of migrating outside of the fence.
I mean, that's, that's pretty good guy.
Which, I mean, that's a legitimate complaint. Like that, that should not happen. So this is part of when we talk about operations. We shouldn't shoot ourselves in the foot.
This is the one where the state came in or?
Yeah, I mean, simple things like, if I walk into a warehouse and it's a mess, I immediately think that the whole operation is, is suspect. And one of the things that you walk in at our town and there's paper and there's stuff, there's, and it just shouldn't happen. It just shouldn't happen. But that's, that's process. That's, that's your guys' deal. And, and, and we can add suggestions, but that should, that should be, that should be you.
Sure, yeah. I have to tell you, I'm taking one hundred percent responsibility for this. This is something that I've been looking at for a couple of years and I haven't, I haven't taken responsibility and gone down there. So, um, this is, this is going to be a thing. I might ruffle some feathers, but.
We have that new employee who seems to be improving, uh, quality of service there.
Happy guy. At the start of time, and, and he doesn't know any differently as far as what's the norm. Yeah. All right, so anything else? I, I can tell you, uh, we had a, um, we had our first, uh, public hearing on the new zoning updates. Uh, we had two people there. Both of them had very constructive suggestions. Um, they are going to submit the ones that they didn't, uh, Bonnie was one of them. She didn't, Bonnie Rosati, she didn't have everything finalized, so she's submitting that in, in writing, um, to Phil. We are going to look at that, this, uh, seven nineteen, uh, incorporate or not incorporate her suggestions, um, what's his name?
Edbo.
No, the guy down on, down by your daughter there.
The Jardine or?
Yeah. He had some very constructive suggestions and also didn't want to join, join back up. But so, we're gonna incorporate some of those, the nineteenth, and then we will, um, submit, submit them to you, to the, to this board. Uh, we should, that should be the first part of August. And we will immediate, we are, we will immediately start the town plan, which we have until, um, twenty, um, twenty-four to do.
Maybe twenty-four?
Something like that. So about a year, about a year.
We have until June of next year.
Oh, is June?
June of next year.
June, yes, that's correct.
June of next year.
Yeah, so a, a, a year to do it. Um.
So with these suggestions, I know Glenn and the EDC have suggested, uh, some specific language related to downtown designation. Is that, I, I haven't seen any, um, thing from zoning, but is that gonna be a part of the, the draft?
No, we're not gonna do it because it's, it's very specific. We can add anytime we want to. That will be the next, the next iteration as soon as, as soon as we get it.
Yeah.
Um, finalized, that'll be part of that. It'll also probably go into the town plan too. So we'll, we'll make the town plan, say that we're working towards a downtown designation, then we'll write the, we'll write the, 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 um, zoning regs to reflect that. And then we'll go from there. The, the biggest, the biggest, uh, stumbling block, I would say, is, is which, which kind of, there's, they, downtown designation wants some sort of a board or some sort of a group that is, I, I don't even know how, I don't know the, the wording that will be the best way to put it. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's either a, a separate board with its own direction or it's a board that reports to the select board, the planning commission. I'm really not sure which is the right way to go.
You didn't Edbo give, I, I thought it was.
There was four different.
Gave, but, but gave you a name of a person who he thought was an expert. So, once they get the zoning through, I, I would imagine, they would even probably, I saw you coming in to talk and try to figure that out.
And the other thing is, Edbo is done with the planning commission as of last week. Uh, he's, he took another job. So that is a huge loss. It's a huge loss. I mean, he's still gonna be there. He's still gonna, he could be, you could probably get him in to do a reference or something.
Who was this?
Edbo. For, he's a role in regional planning, so it's, it's, it's just, he's, he was a great resource and, uh, he knew everything and everybody.
When you do start working on the town plan, Joe put a nice Word document together that, uh, with that, we're, we're playing with the economic development section and get, Jeff, Jessica. and Jessica's working on the, uh, daycare section, that we would send you, so that you have it.
Absolutely, 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 'cause there, there is, uh, you know, the goals are, are gonna be important for the next ten, seven, eight years, that, that plan, you know, and it'll be the direction of the town, and it will be very crucial that we get the, think ahead kinda thing. Think, think positively ahead, but hey.
Why don't you say that, make a public meeting, what?
We, there isn't another public meeting until you got, until we have one.
Oh, okay.
So, we've, we've, we'll add our, our changes, and what we changed already, we'll give it to you guys. Um, you can look at what we've changed already, it's, it's online. However, um, we are going to, I can tell you right now, we're going to add a few things that, you know, like, the one thing that, that sits out, I don't know how the hell, just because you get so dialed down on details, we forgot, one of the things that we are absolutely adamant about doing, is, um, making the downtown so that if, if you, you, you could actually put an apartment in the downtown, but it has to be in the back of the building, and it has to have its own parking. So you can't use the front of your building as an apartment, in the town of Fairhaven, that's what we're trying to go. So that, those will be commercial spaces only.
First floor.
First floor.
Okay.
First floor, and, and what, what we found was that you couldn't, you couldn't say no completely. Because what happens is, is then you're infringing on somebody's right to do what he wants to do with his property, which I'm more than happy to. But, uh, in the, the.
Don't keep that down.
There's a lot of things I'll get hung for, that's probably the least of them. But the, the compromise was to say that X amount of space per the downtown area can be residential, as long as it's in the, in the rear, and it, and it has parking in the back. So, we, somehow we missed that, oh, and so we gotta, we gotta add that in, and which we will do the nineteenth. But there's a few other things, nothing was horrible, a lot of, some of it was, um, some of it was, um, just grammar and things like that, so, so we're there, we're there. Although I bragged to himself, uh, on the way in, that we all finally had the same copy. We get going through something, and we didn't have the same copy. So, by the nineteenth, we will, anyways, that's all, that's, that's enough of that. Um, if, anybody else got anything in the parking lot, if not, roundtable? Rich?
Actually, uh, I did have something in the parking lot, but it could be.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Our, our engineering study for the EPW, or, or we have it now.
Uh, Rich, I'm gonna be honest, I have not, I called the guy, and I haven't, he wanted the engineering plans, and I didn't get into them. So I'm still trying to dig that out, and dig out.
Okay.
I know.
Just like to keep that going forward, forward.
It, it's still on the list, and I apologize, I know, it's been sitting out there for a few.
Okay.
So, and then coming into parking lot, I really don't have much, except, I was gonna mention that catch base, which we've already done on, on Allen Street, they're gonna be there tomorrow.
I went down and talked to the guys this morning about just what was going on, and they said, they took a couple tents, and they said, rain or shine, we're going to do that, 'cause it's been sitting for too long.
Yeah, yeah, this rain's gonna, gonna be a real this week.
Yeah.
It's gonna be all next week, too.
And then that, uh, that bush at Allen and Garvin is still a real bear, I don't think we actually checked that out, though. So I like bush, just one part of it, yeah. Down pretty good, that should really be taken care of.
It's a wild one?
Yeah, I think it's a wild, it's a, it's a shrub bush of some sort, it's a very small bush, but it's, it's really a blinder. You've really gotta get out in the street here, before you can see somebody coming out through there.
I'll go knock on the door tomorrow. I like to give people the option to cut their bush before we send the guys to.
I understand that.
Yeah, I'll just go do it.
You okay with mine now, sir, mine all right, like, cut?
Yeah, that, that looks really good, I noticed that right off.
I get that, I forget. I like shrubbery.
That's all I have.
Jase?
Oh, roundtable, um, nothing new to report, I'm enjoying, uh, the summer weather with no air conditioning, which has been a treat the last few days, um, I can't, my house has twenty-eight windows, and yet I can't get a cross breeze to save my life. But, uh, anyway, I, I'm, a, air conditioner is on the way, but I, uh, what else? Um, I decided that because of my, well, I won't say inexperience, but less experience in all of you with the whys and wherefores of Fairhaven, particularly with locations, I've decided to do a little bit of a walking tour, and so for the last several weeks, I have been walking the town, uh, from end to end. My plan is, by the end of the summer, to have gone up and down every street, and, uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to familiarizing myself more with it.
Stop by when you're down to South Side.
Well, you know, it's funny, because I, apparently one needs an, an invitation to go to the Legion, uh, to have a drink, and so, uh, I, I was thinking, next time I'm down there, definitely we'll stop by.
Stop by, and I'll drag you over.
All right, all right, perfect.
I'm sure if you just walk in there, you'll be all set.
So, just say you're a selectman now, hammer here for the next fifteen, twenty minutes, at least a couple drinks, maybe.
That's true.
Uh, yeah, I, I feel like I'm a broken record with the recreation department, uh, things that I bring up, but, it, it's where I spend a lot of my free time, naturally, um, having, having kids engaged in rec. Uh, you know, two things that come to mind when I think about the field down at the grade school. Our rec department could be making money on concessions, if we had a concession stand there again. And, uh, there's been a lot of interest lately about something similar to, uh, a bicycle pump track. I think that was all over social media with a ton of interest. Uh, but essentially what it is, is a, either a dirt or concrete track with, um, you know, uh, humps and hills over, where, uh, you can do minimal pedaling and have fun, and go at it for the day, so, uh, I, I think something we could, or should, kind of take a look at, and see what, see what we can do for rec, of course, this all being, uh, a part of upcoming, uh, budget conversation for the fall, but, I, I don't wanna lose sight of it, and I'll, I'll be that broken record.
Essex has, Essex has, you know, it's a, you know, they have a tax base heaven, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
But they have a very low-tech, um, bicycle track, very low-tech, it's just trails and dirt, and humps and bumps, and, um, it doesn't look like, uh, they didn't spend a lot of money doing it, and, and it's, the kids love it, the kids are on it all the time. In, in all sizes, and it's how they, how they get kids to be respectful. My, my grandson is four years old, and he gets up there with his little balance bike, and the kids are all around him, but they never, they never run him over, and he's perfectly welcome to be there, you know? It, it, it's, it's doable, you're right.
How is that?
I'm good.
Uh, I have a, um, and you may not be able to answer this, I wrote my notes when we talked about the trailer park on, on, at, or on, uh, Rovers, or on. Airport, thank you, uh, I note, the trailer park estate does not have control of park funds, what did I mean by that?
The, the, um, current administrator is trying to get information from the previous administrator.
Okay.
About bank account information.
I'm a terrible note taker.
Yeah.
We should start investigating, uh, rental lights, or where we can get lights for the end of the concerts in the park, 'cause we're not gonna have, they're not gonna be.
Didn't you say, Joe, that we have some?
Yeah, we have tripod with the, with the LEDs.
Little tripod construction lights.
Okay, well, if we, if that's all we're gonna do, and that's gonna be comfortable enough, then that's fine. I, I wonder if we shouldn't think about some of those road lights?
Those things are super bright.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna light up the center of the park.
Well, the problem is, they're super bright if they're for certain people in the right direction, but they also can blind people, just as badly.
It might, check with the high school, they may have some, you know, those regular.
It's a light tower, the construction people, you, you can rent them pretty cheaply for a couple.
But let's just, let's just make sure we're ready for that.
Right. I agree with Bob on that.
You said the bridge, I'm a little worried about that bridge.
Which one?
At the bottom of the hill, it's, uh, we've popped two holes at either end of the abutments, and this, this spring. So I, I don't know if we need to get that investigated, and if we lose that bridge, we're in deep trouble.
Somebody, I just had.
I, I, I'm the one who, early, and they sent us.
Yeah, no, we actually.
The futures and everything, yeah.
Yeah, we actually had, uh, somebody else ask about that, and, um, I climbed down underneath the bridge and snapped some pictures, sent it to the state, and they said, no, it looks pretty much like it used to be, um, but they sent their guy down. You know, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna backpedal, they said they were gonna send their guy down when they're in the area, just to, not do the inspection, but just take a look.
Okay.
Um, but it is due for, they inspect it every year, so they'll be back sometime this summer.
It needs, I'm, 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 it's kinda deteriorating quickly, more than I would be comfortable with.
They have a, they have a yearly inspection, they used to have, so they should have a inspection, inspection report on that, so.
Yes, yeah, he didn't, so the, the gentleman I talked to, they didn't seem concerned at all.
Okay.
But you never know.
Well, it may be degrees of concern, 'cause every bridge in the world is not, anywhere is where it needs to be, so. Okay, that's all I got. Wanted, uh, expenditure.
Financial report?
Yep.
Yep, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the payroll for thirty-eight thousand, three fifty-three, fifty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the general warrants for ninety-eight thousand, three forty-three, and eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The checkbook status is five hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars, and eleven cents.
We have an executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session for, for personnel under one VSA three thirteen A three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.